Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for September 16, 2014. We'll begin with a special order. Calendar decision items. Item number one, 765-50BZ, 1430 Unionport Road, The Bronx. Motion to grant. Chair Perlmutter?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley-Brown?
Aye.
Item number two, 427-70BZ, 3801 and 3805 Beach Channel Drive, Queens.
Motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number three, 6891BZ, 22315, Union Turnpike, Queens.
Good morning. Josh Reinsmith of Marshall Berstein for the applicant.
Motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number four, 8892BZ, 3007 East Tremonte Avenue, The Bronx.
Motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley-Brown?
Aye.
Item number five, 140-92BZ, 3921 Crescent Street, Queens.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners Frederick A. Becker.
Motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you, and I would just like to welcome the new chair and wish her well. And to paraphrase in Indiana Jones movie, "I believe the mayor chose wisely."
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item number six, 1600BZ, 24404 Francis Lewis Boulevard, Queens.
Motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley-Brown?
Aye.
Item number seven, 25408BZ, 1214 East 15th Street, Brooklyn.
Good morning. Eric Palatnik.
Motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Continued hearing items. Item number eight, 76-12BZ, 148 Norfolk Street, Brooklyn.
Richard Lobell of Sheldon Lobell, PC, for the applicant. Good morning.
You heard our comments yesterday?
We did. I think that there was a question with regards to the, really coming down to the character argument as far as the 1.1 was concerned. And when we submitted our land use study supplementally to the board, we identified a huge number of properties at a 1.0 or greater, as well as a number of properties at a 1.1 or greater. I think we identified a full 34 within the enlarged study area at a 1.0 or greater, as well as, you know, at least 20 homes listed on this sheet which have 1.1 or greater. So as far as the character is concerned, I know that the board has the authority to grant over 1. And we know this because there's BSA grants of special permits under 73622 at over 1. So I don't think the question is centered on whether or not the board's within its jurisdiction to do so. So I think that it's beyond dispute that they are. I think it comes down to the general character finding that's required for special permits. Here, for this special permit, because the question was, why do they get this square footage in the attic? Is it just because they couldn't get it in the cellar? And I think actually that a lot of it is because they just couldn't get it, because they couldn't get it in the cellar. If we're measuring character by not only FAR, which we kind of document in the study, and also establish, even if you took out potentially illegal grants of FAR or illegal overages, you'd still have a large number in that study area of over 1.0 and over 1.1. So if you looked at the, what measured the character of the area, I think that if you just look at the floor area, beyond the floor area ratio, if you looked at the floor area of this home, and moreover, if you looked at the community board's vote here, I think that you really have a home which is within the, which is within the character of the area. And the reason I say that is because this is a, an applicant who came to the board for an initial 73622 special permit, which was granted, and then went forward on this decision after it turned out that the home was, required extensive work due to Sandy, that we were going to come back to the board, made a decision, we came back as an amendment. When we went back to the community board and explained to them what we were requesting, not only did they approve us, but they approved us at 28 to 1, 28 in favor, 1 opposed, a greater number of people approved us for this iteration than the prior iteration. And I think that while that may not always be determinative, I think that here, and with regards to these situations, that this was really indicative of a home which really meant the character of the area. So that's kind of what I wanted to put out there to the board, and if there is any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We were hoping to move towards a resolution of this.
I think that one of the things about looking at a map, it was at the study area and how many BSA approvals there were in the study area, it doesn't actually speak to what happens on the block itself, because character of neighborhood isn't just the 400-foot radius or whatever the study area is that you selected. It's very much what, what is the impact of this project on the block? And though I'm sympathetic to the reality that the houses needed to be lift, need to be lifted, at the same time, the house is very tall for its neighborhood, and there is a lot of attic area, and arguably, the cellar was not going to be used for the same purposes as the attic. So it's effectively that you, in your statement of facts, you say that you needed the attic to support the mechanical space that was in the cellar, but that's actually not what's on the attic. You have a very small boiler room, and other than that, the rest is rec space, recreational space. So effectively, the applicant is taking advantage of the attic the way it would had it been one level lower, but now that it's so much taller, it is a very different building type. And so when you look at neighborhood character, you really do need to look at the block, both sides of the street, and it can't just be a map that shows us which is pink and which isn't pink. It really does need to be streetscapes. So that would be photographs of the street and showing us what the buildings are on the street, and explaining how this building, as proposed, is responding to neighborhood character, understanding at the same time that you don't have any choice but to lift. But what are you doing to mitigate the impact of the lifting against the neighbors who will now have this kind of strange first horror? There are provisions in the zoning resolution for mitigation, but maybe, given that this is a special permit, you take it a little further, that the design is more responsive to that kind of impact, and doesn't just follow the strict language of the zoning resolution, but says, "Look at the other, the other kinds of design elements that I've used to mitigate that impact."
We'd be happy to give the board a streetscape of both sides of the street. I think that the, if we're looking at raw numbers here, we're looking at a 618 square foot attic at the end of the day, which is, which provides some space, and again, we can look at the uses there. It's basically going to be accessory to the residential, but is again, not a very large number in the scheme of this block and other homes in the area. What I would ask the board is that upon provision of the streetscapes, and potentially, to the extent the architect says, "Well, there is a nice way we can mitigate such and such," I would ask whether or not the board, if we did present that to the board, and there was a possibility that we could close this matter and grant it at the next hearing, the reason being that this is someone who originally got their special permit, and literally the month after they received their special permit, would have been unable to build since the time of Sandy due to the, to the new regulations, as well as the uncertainties surrounding the construction. So while I understand that there, this is a very popular, utilized special permit before the board, I find that this gentleman in particular is in a little bit of a different situation, having come in on an amendment. So that's, that's the only thing we'd ask.
I can understand that. I brought up the area study yesterday, and my question is just from prior cases. We know that many houses, when you reference Pluto data, they're not, they're enlarged illegally. So I was the one who asked that you could add the, the ones that had the special permit and what those FAR values were.
That's fine. So particularly for the ones with the special permit?
Yes.
Okay, that, yeah, that's, that's not a problem. I mean, we've spoken to the gentleman who did our land use area study, and to do it on a wider basis may be an issue, but just to focus on the ones with the special permit, that's fairly straightforward.
Right, exactly. Those are the ones I feel comfortable with.
Great, okay.
You might also just want to hone it down and tell us which ones are actually legal. I think you give us sort of the broad overview of the FAR in the neighborhood, but you don't actually call out the ones that perhaps aren't the legal condition.
Right. I think that there's, the way it's been presented to me is that there's difficulties in making that determination for buildings that are after 1961. I think that Mr. Rasmussen, who does many of these studies, makes a presumption that prior to 61, if the bulk was there, that it's legal, but that there is, after that, there's Pluto data, there's DOB data, and there's potentially BSA decisions.
Then maybe you just make a notation to that effect?
Okay.
If you're going to give us sort of the big broad overview, just make some notes, some footnotes that say, you know, X building built before 1961, no, no further information.
Okay, great.
You know, so that we can, you know, kind of get a better idea of.
That's great.
Thank you. And I think then also, in your, in your statement of facts, to be more specific about why that floor area increase is actually needed.
It's fine.
Because the statement that they need mechanical system isn't actually borne out by what's added in the attic.
Right. I think, I think that the discussion was around accessory space for the family, but I'd be happy to go back in and confirm that.
Okay. Are there any, anybody else? Any speakers on this item? Okay, so submission date, oh, so the next available hearing date is the 28th?
Okay.
So of October.
Oh, wow. It's quite a break.
Yeah. There's a lot, as you might imagine, coming.
Sure.
So you, could you submit on the 20, on either the 14th or the 21st?
I think the 14th is great.
Okay.
Yeah. And Chair, is that with a potential closing grant on that?
And so, the, sorry, wow. And we don't have another hearing until the 18th of November. That's tricky. I'm not sure. Want to do it in the grand? Okay, yes, we could do it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
New cases. Item number nine, 921-57BZ, 6602 New Yutrike Avenue, Brooklyn.
Hello. Good morning again, Eric Palatnik. It's nice to be in front of you in a real auditorium. It's quasi-real auditorium. We, well, could use a variance for some more space, but that's another subject. We attended your review session yesterday, and we heard the board's comments with respect to the automotive service station. And we can answer, as much, much as we can answer right now, we'll be happy to answer for the board, and then we'll get back to the board on anything else. We recognize the building could use a paint job, and the owner has agreed to paint the They have also agreed to clean up the site. I understand you went by and you found it to be in unkept order. It's quite different than when I saw it, and also, as you can see from the photos that we submitted, the conditions that I saw. So we spoke to the owner last night, and he agreed that he's going to clean up the site. I'm not quite sure what you saw at the site, but whatever you saw will be cleaned up, and it will be kept in its proper tidy format. With respect to the underground storage tanks, we're checking to see if they were closed and sealed when the site was converted from an automobile gasoline sales to auto repair about, I forget the exact year, but that occurred in the past, and we'll make sure that the tanks are sealed and itemized and dealt with in a proper manner, both the fire departments, as well as Department of Environmental Conservation. The hours of operation, we will correct in our statement. I apologize for the typo. It's 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM Friday and Sunday, and it's 8:00 to 5:00 Monday through Friday. And we'll correct that in our statements. That reads properly. And I believe you had a question about the landscaping. In the back left corner of the property, when you, where the left side of the property, front from the Yutrike, there's a strip of landscaping. I believe that's what you're speaking about. There's some confusion between the owner, whether or not it's his responsibility, or the restaurant next door, or the bar next door, or whatever, the catering hall, I'm not quite sure what the establishment is. But he was going to speak with the next door neighbor and see who's historically even taken care of that.
Wasn't there landscaping, though, on your previous grant? And isn't it on your site as well?
No, I looked, I didn't see anything on the last set of approved plans from the board from the 2002 approval.
Well, maybe we could make it easier, that there really should be landscaping as a buffer between this site and the other site. So if it belongs to the other guy, there's supposed to be landscaping on this side.
Normally, I'd agree with the landscaping, but this is really, if you look at the site, the photos, it's not really the ideal location for any landscaping at all. I mean, it's really where cement area matches up against a brick wall. So it's a lot line condition of an automotive service station against a lot line wall. So I don't know what the landscaping would really do. It's not on your plans from 2002. I don't know when they came off of the plans, what year before that. They might have been removed. Would you like to see the landscaping?
If the landscaping is actually on, on your, your property.
Excuse me?
It looks like the landscaping is actually on your.
From the photos, it looks that way, but, you know, like I said, the plans don't show it, they previously approved, and the owner wasn't quite sure. What would your intent, the intention of the board be? What would you desire to see, noting that it's sort of a concrete condition there?
Well, there's actually a strip of dirt adjacent to the residential property on, what is it, 66th Street, which is not landscaped, but it's kind of weedy. That was what I had in mind in terms of improving the site. If you could take a look.
Take a look. Again, I'm just getting, pulling out some photographs so I can. I mean, the condition, I'm sure you have view too, which is, depicts, I think, the portion that you were speaking of.
Yes, exactly.
I don't know if landscaping will really take so well. It's not really like the ideal cars are being parked up against it, and I don't know if we're really achieving anything by parking, by putting landscaping there.
Well, that's another issue. That was another issue I had. The site is very busy. You don't provide a parking layout on your plans. There was one on the previously approved plans. This site has repairs and also is listed as having car sales. Yet when I went to the site, there were at least four cars parked on the sidewalk outside the site, as well as the site full of cars. And some of those cars on the sidewalk didn't have license plates, so I assume those are the ones that are up for sale.
Maybe, or maybe he's working on them.
And I think the site might be too small for car sales.
Well, I don't know if it's too small for car sales. I think it's too small if he's got cars on the sidewalk. He shouldn't have cars on the sidewalk.
Absolutely. And the site was full.
But the, the car sales are really not, it's not a full car sales business. I mean, he sells a car to a month if he sells that. It's not as, he sells the cars that he's working on. So the request for the car sales is to be auxiliary to the auto repair. Once in a while, he gets a car that the client either gives him to sell, or he sells on his own. But it's not the primary thrust of the business, but to lose it would, a small business like this would hurt.
Cars should not be parked on the sidewalk.
They shouldn't be on the sidewalk. Why don't I do this? Let me go back to the client and see if I can get the site painted before your next hearing, and come back with photos of the site cleaned up, and present that to you, and see what I can find out about the landscaping. And report back.
And also have a plan for how you're going to accommodate all of your, your cars on your site.
An operational plan.
Either with striping, or something on a plan that we can actually look at. And also, when you do that, please include other things on your plan that are in existence, like your dumpster location, your fencing, that aren't currently on the plan.
We'd be happy to.
As well as the landscaping, if it is determined that it is your landscaping, which I believe it is, because it is on your site.
Yeah, it's on your site.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm, I see it's on the site, it's just not on the previously approved plans. It's not reflected on. So it might be a carryover from before, and I'll take a look, and if it could be cleaned up, and maybe some fresh trees could be put in the spot, we'll take a look.
Okay. Great. Okay. Anyone else? Any speakers on this item? Okay, so could you also submit on the 14th of October? Is that enough time?
That's more than enough time.
Okay, and then hearing on the 28th?
Thank you.
Item number 10, calendar number 22984BZ, 75-28 Queens Boulevard, Queens, Crowe and Sanders.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners Jeremiah Candreva for Valley Total Fitness of New York. I attended yesterday's review session in connection with the application for the extension of term of this existing PCE, which has been functioning here since 1984, so for over 30 years. I went back to the photographs, and I agree with the commission's comments that the building does need a paint job. In fact, it seems like some of the paint was peeling, and overall, in a state of disrepair. I contacted Valley yesterday. They have agreed to repaint, or cause the repainting by hiring a contractor of the building. In addition, I looked at the barbed wire condition. We will remove the barbed wire condition at the request of the commission. It is, it's a type of barbed wire that bends into the site to discourage one who may have gained access, or unauthorized access, from attempting to flee the site. But we will remove the barbed wire. You know, this is a site, it's kind of a very interesting site when you look at the layout. It is technically borders Queens Boulevard, but it borders the service road of Queens Boulevard, where it's separated by a sidewalk, and it's in the block bound by Neeland and Jacobus Street. And Neeland is a dead-end street. And, and so adjacent to, I'm sorry, the uses on Neeland Street, or automotive repair, I'm sorry, automotive lot, as well as food factory. And those are the only uses on that block. That's the block to the south of, of the site. The block to the north of the site is a motel, a factory, and a, a public Department of Education school building. To the, immediately to the west of the site is the Walter Cronkite Intermediate School, which is a very large institutional building that backs onto 51st Avenue, that completes the block. And that's improved with basketball courts and track. And so this is, this is a facility that is completely separated by institutional and factory uses. There are no residential uses in proximity to it. It's separated also by a very large thoroughfare, Queens Boulevard, and Queens Boulevard Service Road. And so in that regard, it leads me to the discussion of another commission comment that occurred yesterday with respect to the hours of operation. I did contact Valley, and I did confirm that they operate with slightly different hours than those that were set forth in the original, the original resolution. Monday through Friday, the original resolution granted operation from 6:30 to 10:00. Valley's is operating presently, Monday through Thursday, from 6:00 to 11:00. So a half an hour earlier in the morning, and an hour later in the evening. On Friday, however, it's similar to the proposed, the proposed, the existing is similar to that was, which was approved. The approval was 6:30 to 10:00, and on Friday, they're operating from 6:00 AM to 10:00. There's also a slight change in hours of operation from what exists from that which was approved. What was approved on Saturday was 9:00 to 6:00, and Sunday, 9:00 to 5:00, and Valley has been operating from 8:00 to 9:00 on the weekend. In this regard, I'd seek to amend the application to indicate the hours of, of operation. The last comment that was raised yesterday was a comment that had to do with some interior configuration alterations, which exist. And I did confirm, in fact, that a partition wall was put up to segregate aerobic exercise from fitness, overall fitness instruction. One of the reasons for the partition of the aerobic exercise is to provide the individuals who participate in aerobic instruction with privacy, as well as to increase the efficiency in which that aerobic instruction occurs outside of, and separate or apart from, the instruction of overall physical fitness. The other change that, that occurs and exists is a slight reconfiguration to the vestibule lobby area. Although the overall area that was dedicated to vestibule and lobby has not changed, the configuration changed slightly. A perpendicular wall is now diagonal. But having said that, none of these changes resulted in increase of floor area for the facility. Lastly, I would like to note, this is a facility that has a final certificate of occupancy. It has a public assembly permit, and it has, I'd like to say, no violations, but in fact, the one violation that does exist was for not having a final C of O. And so it's an outstanding old violation from 2007. It should have been removed from record, because we do have a final C of O. So this is a relatively clean site, and in that regard, I would like to supplement my application by making the noted agreements by Valley's. And if it's acceptable to board, I'd like to request that with this submission, we could close the hearing?
Just have one question, though. I think another of the comments was not just the barbed wire, but the condition of the fence, which even in the photographs that you show, the fence is kind of doing this. It doesn't, and, and though this is, it's true, it's in a neighborhood that's kind of industrial, but the whole idea is that, that a property owner is supposed to maintain the property in proper condition and not become a blight.
I agree with you. I agree with you completely. And I'll bring that to my client's attention, and I will strongly suggest to them that to extent that the fence needs repair, or that it's bent, that, you know, we need to be good neighbors here, and fix, repair, or, and/or replace the fence. I would, I would anticipate there'd be absolutely no objection to that type of repair request.
Okay. Any other comments on this?
No.
Anyone from the public would like to speak on this? Okay. I'd be okay with the, with closing the hearing and, and you making the submission where the owner represents that it will paint, remove the barbed wire, and also repair the fence, repair slash replace the fence.
Right, okay. I just made, actually, I just made that submission, but I'll formally submit tomorrow and speak to Valley with respect to the fence itself, not just the barbed wire?
Right, okay. Okay. Great. Could you provide photos that you have made the proper repairs and removed the barbed wire?
Yes, although I do, I do think there's a timing issue that we should talk about, because I don't know, if it wasn't last year, it was the year before, I lived north of the city, we lost power. We had a significant snowstorm in December. I'm sorry, in October for Halloween, we had a significant snowstorm. And so, not to get ahead of myself, I don't know what the weather has in store for us, and I don't know the timing in which it would be kind of reasonable to assume the client would go out, hire a contractor to repaint, repair, change the fence. But certainly, if we miss a very potentially short window because of weather, I wouldn't anticipate repainting until sometime in the spring. And so I, I don't think it's unreasonable to request a certain amount of time to get that done. And so in this regard, I would think, we have to go back to the building's department to update our final C of O, to reflect the, not that I'm being presumptuous, but to the extent the board grants the extension of term, the C of O that we presently have expires when this term expires, which is November of, of this year. So, so I have to go back to the board to get a new C of O. I'd be fine with, and I'd suggest perhaps if the board consider making it a condition of the grant, that these things occur as a condition of getting the final C of O, the renewal of the final C of O. I mean, if the board would rather put a time period on it, I'm fine with that, too. I just, I need to be in a situation that if I do get stuck with weather, I can get it done, not having to go through the time and expense of the client to come back to the board to say, "I got stuck with winter, and I didn't get it done. Could you please give me more time?"
Okay, so how about this idea, though? Because it's a nice day other than rain, right? That doesn't stop you from, rain doesn't stop fence repairs?
Yes.
Right? So actually, if you were really, if your client were really motivated, it'd be easy to find a contractor who could paint a wall between now and the first snowstorm. And it's probably easy, given the location, to find fence repair people, right? So let's, let's say, though, that we get, in addition to the statement from your client, that they will make, let's say, serious effort to show to us that they have engaged a painter and a fence repair by the time of the next hearing, and then we'll talk about whether we're willing to grant on condition. Let's see what they can do if they have a fire lit under them.
Okay. If it pleased the board, I'm happy to go back to the client.
to grant on condition. Let's see what they can do if they have a fire lit under them.
Okay. If it pleased the board, I'm happy to go back to the client. I, you know, this is a client, by the way, who, there's a long history before the board. We've recently emerged out of bankruptcy and as my representation of the client, we have brought every Bally into compliance with building code, with fire code, and with board resolutions. And so, as the client emerged out of bankruptcy, there are certain expenses that one can incur. And so, this is just, we'll see where we are next, next hearing.
A paint job is not a major expense.
It's probably to the tune of $15,000 to $20,000 or more, so.
But so then why would, then why does the $15,000 or $20,000 appear after the, after the winter storms?
Just when, when, when corporations allocate budgets with the terms their fiscal year and their allocations per month.
So, this isn't really about weather. This is about money?
No, it's not. If we have the money, I'm happy to do it.
Okay.
But if, and, and we have the mother, if we have the money and the weather permits, I'm happy to get it done as soon as possible. I, I asked the client yesterday for a commitment and I couldn't get one. And I asked, "Can you get it done before the winter?" Because I wanted to represent to the board that we could get it done before the snow. And they, they couldn't as of last night. I mean, I had less than 24 hours. I couldn't get it organized and on a ledger to say, "Yes, this is slotted. It'll happen." It just didn't work that quickly.
Okay. Well, so now you'll have more time. So, for the next submission of October 14th, you have enough time to speak to your client, get a commitment from them to do the painting. Ideally, they all have started already. That's a lot of time between now. They could have actually finished the paint job between now and October 14th. That would be a great sign to us that they're going to move forward with the fence. But at the moment, I'm hearing that even a paint job is too much. Not even like hiring people from the neighborhood to do a paint job. That's a little hard to understand.
Can I just say something?
Yeah.
I raise this concern of having it done prior to the grant because if not for having to come here for an extension of term, this lot has fallen into a state of disrepair in terms of the fencing and the building. And if you didn't have to come here, I'm not entirely sure that you would go about the process of making sure that your site actually was not a blight on the neighborhood. And so, my concern is that if we say, "Okay, we're going to allow you to take your time to schedule it over the next 10 months," it may not be done until you have to come back here. And that would be a problem.
I, I, I understand your comment and commissioner, as much as I respectfully, I understand it on all levels. I, I, as respectfully as I can, I think that, I'd like to say I disagree with the comment to the extent it reflects upon not only my client, but my practice as well. I have had a stellar relationship with this client and gotten them to bring all of their facilities up to code. And that's why I'm here. In fact, I'm not here standing before you with an application that is expired without a P A, without a C of O that has violations on it. I'm here before you with an application that has yet to expire. And although you see many PCEs, I think a very small percentage of PCEs that you see are similarly situated as this client in this particular circumstance. So, I'm happy to go back and we are committed to removing the barbed wire. We're committed to repainting the building. We, I will seek and I'm sure, receive the consent of my client to repair the fence. And I'll see you on the next scheduled hearing.
Which is, so you'll submit on the 14th and the hearing is on the 28th of October. Okay? That work for you?
Is that the first possible date?
That's the first available.
October 28th. I may need to be in Superior Court on litigation. May I just get back to you if that's, if I don't have my calendar on that litigation. It's either the 28th or the 29th and I'm just not sure.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Item number 11, calendar number 17803BZ, 11402 Van Wick Expressway, Queens, Eric Palatnik.
Hello, good morning again, Eric Palatnik. We attended your review session, review session yesterday, this automotive service station. And we're having the operator remove the signage that they have on the fencing. So, that'll all be taken care of. And we are having a search conducted right now about the underground storage tanks to make sure that they're all in accordance with the D E C regulations. I believe the site was rebuilt in 2003. And when it was, the new fiberglass double wall tanks were installed at that time. But we'll obtain written documentation of that from the engineering firm responsible for that. And that's essentially it. I think the board asked why they feel the, this automotive service station is still in character with the area. I think that was a question you had yesterday. And the answer to that is, well, first of all, it's, it's been an automotive service station for some time since 1948. It's rested at this corner. And it's the subject of a special permit originally, not even a variance. The last action the board took in 2003 was a special permit application under, I think it was 7336, I think is the section. I'm just, 73, 7311 is the section that it was granted under. Thank you for correcting me. So, that's sort of a prima facie evidence that the use is one that's encouraged in a community. If it's a special permit, meaning the legislature, the city planning, Department of City Planning, or City Planning Commission here has already designated C2 districts as proper for automotive service stations, provided we meet the findings. And that's primarily due to vehicular circulation and the size of the zoning lot. And I think here that it meets both of the findings as far as it's, the minimum lot size is larger than 7,500 square feet. And its orientation on the roadway being on the service, really on the service road to the Van Wick Expressway, we think makes it well suited in its location and won't disrupt traffic and hasn't been a disruption. And plus, I think it's fairly well maintained except for the signage, which is on the fence. That shouldn't be there.
And then what about the, your comment about the 530 block rezoning, but that it would have no change in the nature of the approval? What was the extent of the rezoning?
The rezoning was, it's greater to make a rezoning. It stopped east of the property on the other side of the Van Wick Expressway.
So, across?
Across the Van Wick.
You can't even see it from?
From our property, correct. It stopped on the other side of the Van Wick. We're on the west side. It's on the east side.
Okay, so could you discuss that that way?
Sure.
And your findings and also about why it's still in character with the neighborhood in your, in your findings?
We'd be happy to.
Okay.
And you're going to provide us photos, new photos of the site?
Yes.
Showing the signage removed.
With the signage removed.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else on this? Are there any speakers on this matter? Okay. So, again, submission date of October 14th and hearing October 28th.
Thank you.
Here we go.
Appeals calendar, decision items, item number 12, calendar number 24512, 12A, 515 East 5th Street, Manhattan, lawsuit Marvin Z. Mitzner.
The board is going to reopen this case. So, motion to reopen?
Chair Paramonah?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hingston?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown?
Aye.
Good morning, Madam Chair Commissioners, Marvin Mitzner, the applicant. I first like to add my welcome to the new chair of the board and wish her well. And I look forward to working with the board under your, under your chairpersonship. I believe that's the word. This is, this is the, the last application, a series of applications that resulted from a 2008 decision of this board that overturned the longstanding practice of D O B in granting waivers of the M D L for enlargements of tenements in return for significant fire safety improvements. The 2008 decision was challenged in court and the court, although not deciding that determination by the board, essentially suggested that applications be filed under M D L 310, which the board indicated is the proper procedure for waiving the M D L. And so, the first application was with the, by a sister building, 514, 516, East 6th Street, which was granted by this board. Days prior to the 2008 decision on the M D L waivers, the area within which East 6th Street, as well as this property, East 5th Street is located, was rezoned. So, the buildings became noncompliant. In the case of East 6th Street, we therefore had to file a vested rights application or the common law vesting as well as an M D L 310 waiver applications. Both were approved and both were challenged. At least the M D L 310, so it was challenged in court, went through both the Supreme Court sustaining of the B S A grant of the, of the M D L 310 application as well as an appellate division decision which was granted, I believe it was in, in 2012. At that point, we, we filed the applications in connection with this building, 515 East 5th Street, both, similarly, both a vested rights application as well as an M D L 310 waiver application. The board determined that we did not, not grant vested rights because there was another D O B longstanding practice which this board had overturned and that related to the Sliver Law. This building proposed a one-third penthouse, which the Department of Buildings had consistently considered not to be a story. And the board disagreed and therefore this building became noncompliant with respect to that. When we filed the vested rights application, the board determined that because of that zoning noncompliance, it could not grant the common law vesting. And therefore, we filed a variance application under a good faith. That variance application has been heard and is now awaiting decision, which has been deferred pending the outcome of, of this application. That's just by way of a short history because the owner has been through literally hell with respect to these buildings, particularly 515 East 5th. He complied with the building apartment approval. The plans were approved, examined by D O B. He did what he was supposed to do. And then because of later decisions that turned out to make that approval noncompliant, he was caught in a quagmire. And we're still trying to get him out of that quagmire. I know at the executive session, the board raised a number of specific issues which I'd like to address. There was one comment, I believe that was made by the chair about fire separation. I believe you mentioned fire separation of first and second floor, but generally the fire separation that we consider in terms of M D L approvals and waivers is between the cellar and the first floor. Because most fires that occur in these buildings occur in the cellar where you have your mechanical equipment, your boilers and other things. And so, it's, it's essential to protect that area from propagation of smoke and fire above. And therefore, the building was installed. All these fire safety improvements have already been installed. The building is complete. It has been complete for some time. We just can't get it, couldn't get a C of O because of the prior decisions. But to, to protect the cellar, we've, we've installed two layers of sheet rock in the ceiling and sprinklered the cellar, which is traditionally what's been done. And our fire safety consultant has attested to that. So.
But just with respect to that, this is a tenement building. And what are the uses on the ground floor?
There is residential use in the front as well as community facility use.
Okay, so because traditionally and in the M D L with respect to tenements, because typically the tenement has a nonresidential use on the first floor, so in this case, community facility, but it could also have been retail, right? That the, the, the idea is that you don't want fire spread to come to, through the corridor level and begin to engage the apartments that are directly above the corridor. That's why there's a requirement for what's known as deafening, which is a, you know, I forget what the, the number of hours are. It's like a two-hour fire separation.
Two hours.
And so, that's why I asked why there isn't another layer of sheet rock being, or two layers like, just like you're doing in the walls, as long as you're there, putting them on the ceiling before you install sprinklers.
Well, first of all, we're not doing any work. The work's been done. So, all the sheet rock on the wall, everything's been completed. All the fire safety improvements have been installed.
Do we know that?
That's what, that, we come to this board.
Having done all?
The application, the, 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 the owner filed two applications. He filed an Alt 2 application to do the base building work, which included all the fire safety improvements. He then filed an Alt 1 application for the enlargement, a separate application to build the noncombustible enlargement.
Okay.
They were filed separately. It's been signed off. The work, the base building work, including all the fire safety improvements are done.
When, when did your, your first Alt 1, where you did the fire safety improvements? When, when did that get signed off?
The Alt 2, you mean?
The Alt 2. The Alt 2, sorry.
A long time ago, years ago.
So, you included the sprinkler work in that as well?
Yes, everything was done.
Because the application reads "will do," doesn't say "did do" in. So, we had questions specifically about how, how the sprinkler system was working or not working. And the thought was that it was not installed completely yet.
I have, based upon what comments yesterday, I have copies, and I'll be glad to submit it with my submission, from Delmar Plumbing Corp., which conducts testing every month. And we have reports of the sprinkler being tested. So, it's in place and it's been tested and it works.
So, apparently there was a fire in 2005 or something?
There was some reference to a 2011 fire.
2000.
I'll get more information on, I don't know what occurred then, but the, the sprinkler testing was done in 2011 also. So, there would be records of, of whether they're working or not.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, in regards to fire stopping, you're not requesting any waivers of fire stopping?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so, okay, so this is a different take. We thought what you were doing is making a proposal as an alternate. This was what you proposed to the Department of Buildings and what they waived, what they allowed as a replacement for complying with the M D L.
That's correct. These were all accepted by D O B. They were installed and they were signed off.
Okay.
And the only thing that remained, unfortunately, we were caught in a time pressure. The only thing that we had to do to finalize everything is get the C of O. And before we can get the C of O, the, the, the issue with respect to D O B's ability or authority to waive the M D L came up.
Okay. So, let me ask this because when this application was first here, we instituted some changes that were beyond the scope that you had requested. So, that kind of work had been done as well?
I'm not sure I understand what you're referring to.
Well, I think that, that we had sort of modified in a way what, what you had proposed to us as being waivable or in, or in accordance with the spirit of the M D L. So, I'm, I'm confused as if, if we sort of modified in some way what you were proposing. How did that work actually get done? So, I know that we had proposed additional sprinklering. We had proposed.
Not on this application. No, there was no discussion at all with the 515 East 5th. There may have been some other application. I know there was discussion on, on East 9th Street, for example, about that, but no discussion at all on this application.
So, as, as you've, you've represented it to us, that's how it's been built and?
Correct.
All right.
So, every dwelling unit is sprinkled as well as the hallways?
Yes, as I understand it, that's correct.
But the dwelling units do not have hardwired smoke detectors?
I believe they do. That's something that I know is, there was a comment on. I'll have to verify that.
Right.
But my understanding is that, that the standard fire safety improvements that we've listed, which includes additional sheet rock to create a fire, a fire rating, fireproof self-closing doors, smoke detector sprinklers and, and the steel stairway to the cellar as well as the sheet rock on the roof of the cellar, that was all done.
Could you verify the sprinklers? Because your papers say that only the common areas in the cellar are sprinkled, not that the apartments are sprinkled.
I'll verify that, but I'll, I'll check on, on the, on the application.
And I think that that was part of what we had discussed, was that we were looking at amending the sprinklers.
It wasn't on this application.
The one we just approved, 9th Street, where we said sprinkle all areas.
That's correct.
Because these are occupied units. Haven't you actually installed a sprinkler in an occupied unit?
You can't. Part of the hardship is, is installing, is doing any work in occupied units. And, and that's part of the hardship application. But I will verify to see what was approved by D O B in terms of sprinklering and what we've actually installed.
Actually, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm confused, still confused about that. Can you give us a copy, I don't see it here in the file, of a perforated set of the, of D O B drawings that includes the sprinkler drawings? That way, there won't be any guesswork. We'll know what was approved and presumably that's what was, was this signed, was the sprinkler work signed off?
Everything was signed off, as I understand.
Everything was signed off, so. So, this doesn't show. Right, there's no sprinkler drawings here.
No, there are no sprinkler drawings that are part of the file, but I will.
Okay.
Search for them and, and.
Okay, okay, interesting.
Now, there was, there was also a comment about the penthouse. As we did in East 6th Street where after we've gotten the approval, we filed for. As we did in East Sixth Street, where after we'd gotten the approval, we filed for removal of the penthouse, and the penthouse, in fact, is removed. The same process will work here. I know that Commissioner Hinkson suggested a demolition permit.
Yes.
We'd be more than happy to file for a permit, but I doubt if it'll be approved prior to the grant of the variance, because a demo permit for the penthouse presumes the legality of the sixth floor below it. And until we get the variance approval, we don't have actual show.
No, I understand that, but I think that our concern had been that you had not even sort of gone down that road in so many months after we, you know, sort of decided that this penthouse was not a legal structure. I think we had asked many, many times for you to at least file for it, and there was reticence on your side of the table to do that.
Well, reticence, I mean, we made a commitment to demolish the penthouse within a certain amount of time following approval.
A commitment is represented in a small piece of paper called a permit. So, I think that even if DOB would like to wait until we have acted, I think that applying for that permit would go a long way in assuring us that the intent is to remove that penthouse.
Not a problem. We can file for a demolition permit, presuming the sixth floor remains and the penthouse is removed.
Okay. So, I kind of want to take that another step further. So, there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, how, we just had a discussion on another case, about how you once granted ensure that the applicant actually does what they were supposed to do, right? And if I understand this correctly, the apartment on the top floor, the sixth floor in the penthouse apartment, has been occupied since 2007, all of it without a C of O. So, kind of, what's the motivation, once we make a decision for you to act, for your client to actually remove this penthouse? He's been happy without a C of O for all this time, or happy...
Not really.
He's functioned without a C of O for all this time, and made a living off of the addition that's an illegal, or is an illegal occupancy. So, actually, I'm trying to see why we can take this a little bit further. So, for example, I'm thinking that, or that you could actually remove the penthouse without disturbing very much the tenant in the sixth floor, and could probably do that within the next two, three months. And so, we could say that we would not grant until we see the penthouse removed, at which point, then you've repaired the roof, you've done all of that stuff, and it's great that all the fire stop work has already been done, so we thought that that was going to be included in the scope of the work, and it's not. It doesn't seem like it would be that much work in the end, and it is something that could be done with a tenant in place, or you temporarily relocate the tenant.
Just for clarification, there is no tenant on the penthouse level. The penthouse level is part of duplex apartments below.
Yes, understood.
So, it's not a separate apartment in the penthouse.
Right, understood.
And as I said earlier, I don't know how we could demolish it without the variance being granted. If the board wishes to grant the variance, so that the sixth floor becomes legal, you know, then we can certainly consider that, but I can't, there's no way I can file an application, demolish it at this point.
Well, we already know that the penthouse is not permitted, so I don't understand, I mean, the only, from your point of view, maybe it's just additional work, but I don't understand why the penthouse can't be demolished just on its own as a separate matter, because we've already decided that.
But you haven't decided that the sixth floor is lawful.
That's irrelevant to demolishing the penthouse.
I will check, but I don't believe it is. I believe that in order for us to get a permit...
If DOB would like to discuss that with the board, that's one thing, but I don't think that they would object to allowing you to actually fulfill what the board has already decided upon. I don't see that they would have any interest in the sixth floor, other than, you know, your method of deconstruction, but as far as sort of the legalities of removing that penthouse, I should think that, you know, that's something that DOB would not have an issue with.
Well, I'd be more than happy to discuss it with DOB and get back to you.
Okay. And we can make a call to DOB too, to make this possible. So, but really, the only way that we can be sure that this will be removed, and then we can, everybody can move on with their lives, is if this is done before grant.
Well, that's not entirely true, because East Sixth Street was approved by this board, both the vested rights case was approved, and the MDL 310 application was approved by East Sixth Street. And after the approval, the owner went back in and filed for the demolition of the penthouse, and the penthouse is in fact removed. So, I think that's an example of his commitment to do what he has to do under these circumstances. And it's the same commitment he's making here. So, I think that's more proof of his willingness to actually demolish the penthouse after approval than anything else, because he's done it.
Well, I don't, if he's willing to demolish the penthouse, I'm not sure I understand why there would be pushback in what order it's done. And if it makes the board more comfortable that this work is done prior to grant, and it's not that much time that will be needed, I doubt you need more than two months to grant, then I, I mean, to accomplish this, I'm not really sure why there's pushback. In fact, I would think that the owner would be eager to just get this over with, close up the roof, remove the staircase to the roof, whatever, and not disturb the tenant, not disturb the tenant any more than necessary, get this all finished. Seems to me that he would be eager to get started tomorrow, if it was possible to do that, and if a permit was obtained for that. So, I'm not getting why there would need to be a delay till there's grant, till there's... I'm not, I'm not understanding that.
It's not pushback, it's the intimation that this owner will not live up to his word, and that's what, that's what, that's what I'm concerned about. Because he has, because he has.
Okay, so let's forget that part.
Fine.
We're just talking about wanting to get this done. We'd like to get this done sooner. And so, if, so we're happy to help facilitate getting the demo permit just to remove the penthouse, and it seems to me that in a very short time period, that could be done. Then that part of the violation is not even a discussion anymore, and then we can move to the decision on the multiple dwelling and the variance.
All right, as I said, I will discuss with Buildings and look into what we can do in order to accomplish that.
Okay, great. Anybody else? Are there any speakers on this item? Please come forward.
Please state your name for the record, you'll be given three minutes.
Sure. Good morning. My name's Daniel Bernstein. I'm from the law firm of Arnold &amp; Porter. Our client, the Tenants Association of 515 East Fifth Street, shares this board's concerns that the owner's fire safety improvements are inadequate, that the illegally constructed apartments continue to be illegally occupied, and that no concrete steps have been taken to remove the unlawful penthouse. Mr. Mitzner referred to East Sixth Street. We believe that situation is different. That illegal addition was never occupied, there were never any tenants in there. This board asked why the owner is dragging his feet and removing the penthouse, and possibly the sixth floor. I think there's a very simple answer. With each and every day that goes by, the owner continues to collect illegal market-rate rent on that penthouse. The owner does not want to remove the tenants from that penthouse, because that would cost him market-rate rent. Indeed, the owner continues to advertise the penthouse on websites, on other public forums, to get new tenants to come in there, even though the owner has known for years that the penthouse is illegal and must come down. So, we respectfully request that the board require the owner to account for all the rental income earned from the illegal occupancy of these four duplex units, that's the sixth floor and the seventh floor. There's no question the penthouse has to come down. Mr. Mitzner agrees. Ignoring the income from this penthouse would be arbitrary and capricious, and it would make the board's decision vulnerable in a court of law. Furthermore, because the illegal income bears directly on the financial hardship analysis required for a zoning variance, the board should reopen the zoning variance application, so that any new submissions can be added to that record as well. To ensure that the owner brings the building into compliance with all applicable laws, the board should postpone consideration of the current applications, and that's plural, until, one, the penthouse is actually removed, and, two, the owner files new plans with the DOB showing a compliant building, but for the variances specifically requested in these applications. There are no such plans on file with the DOB. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Jasmine Torres. I'm here on behalf of City Councilmember Rosie Mendez. She apologizes she could not be here, but has asked me to read her testimony on her behalf. Good morning, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to voice my opposition for the variance request being sought for the premises located at 515 East Fifth Street due to the owner's noncompliance with the multiple dwelling law. My name is Rosie Mendez, and I am the councilwoman representing District Two of Manhattan, where the subject property is located. My knowledge of this building dates back to my first term in office as councilmember that commenced in January 2006, when my office received numerous complaints from tenants who resagged in the building. I first visited the building on a tour with then-Manhattan Borough President Scott Stringer shortly after he and I had taken office. Present at that tour were representatives from the Department of Buildings, Housing Preservation and Development, and Community Board Three. We witnessed construction and renovations in public areas, as well as in individual apartments. As a result of the proposed and completed work, we filed a variety of complaints in the months that followed. Since 2006, the owner has converted the ground floor and basement into a commercial rental space, which housed a sauna/spa and a colon cleansing business for many years. Additionally, the owner constructed two additional floors to the building in order to create penthouse apartments. This board must decide two separate issues with respect to the subject property. One is the zoning resolution, case number 266-13-BZ, which has been deferred until a decision is rendered in the present case, and, two, the case before us, which pertains to the multiple dwelling law. This board should deny the owner's request for a variance, because the owner has not provided any indication of a financial hardship to evidence the need for a variance under the requirements set forth in both MDL Section 310 and Section 72-21 of the zoning resolution. Without such evidence, which is key for this board to determine whether such a variance should be granted, the Board of Standards and Appeals should deny the owner's request. The owner has yet to provide a proper accounting for the income acquired from the units that were illegally constructed and have been occupied since 2006. In addition to collecting market-rate rent on these units, the owner has been renting each space without a certificate of occupancy. While the owner has expressed that construction of the units were based upon reasonable reliance on DOB, which has since been struck down by this board, creating a financial hardship, without providing a proper accounting, I am not convinced that any hardship exists. Additionally, the owner has conceded that regardless of the decision rendered by this board, the penthouse, which consists of the seven-story, must be removed. However, because the sixth and seventh story are connected to one another, the owner should be compelled to produce a construction plan that details how the seventh story...
Can I just finish?
How the seventh story will be removed without causing damage to the building, its residents, as well as neighboring buildings. On November 25, 2008, on appeal, the BSA reversed the determination of DOB's Manhattan Borough Commissioner Christopher Santulli dated March 6, 2008. This board further revoked alteration permit number 104368845, finding that the DOB alteration permit did not comply with the pertinent sections of the MDL, and that the DOB had not provided any statutory or legal authority supporting its authority to waive the MDL requirements. This board further disagreed with DOB enforcing the MDL outside of its prescribed manner, finding that an alteration permit inconsistent with the MDL must be granted by the BSA and not the DOB. The owner did not apply for a variance with the BSA until 2012, four years after the November 25, 2008 decision. The variance being sought for the subject property should be denied, because the MDL does not permit a non-fireproof tenement to be enlarged unless the tenement is brought up to code under the requirements for new constructions. Enlargements of the property are governed by MDL Section 211, which prohibit enlargements of non-fireproof tenements which exceed five stories. Here, the property is seven stories, and although a sprinkler system was installed by the owner, this sprinkler system has never functioned, as evidenced by a fire erupting on March 23, 2011, that was not extinguished until the fire department arrived, because the sprinkler system did not activate. In speaking with a tenant of the building last week, I confirmed that the sprinkler system, to this day, does not work. Without a properly functioning fireproofing system, this variance cannot be granted. The variance should further be denied, because the owner has not complied with MDL fireproof construction requirements triggered when a building is enlarged above five stories. Under MDL Section 425, the floors and roof must be made of noncombustible materials and one and one-half-hour resistive rating. The owner, however, has yet to meet this requirement. Further, under MDL Section 102 and Section 108, interior exit stairs must be enclosed in noncombustible three-hour fire-rated walls. The existing stair enclosures, however, are made of plaster and wood lath on wood studs laminated with fire-rated sheet rock on the stair side only. Although the owner was unnoticed that the building conditions did not conform with the MDL requirements as of the November 25, 2008 BSA decision, no further steps have been taken to date in order to comply with the aforementioned requirements. A variance, therefore, cannot be physically granted. For all the reasons listed above, the owner's request for a variance should be denied, and the illegally constructed units should be removed. I want to thank the commissioners and the BSA for the opportunity to testify on this matter. This is an issue which has navigated its way through the BSA docket for well over six years. Certainly, the lengthy duration of this case speaks volumes about the importance of the issues raised, as well as the ramifications that it may have beyond my district. Of utmost importance to me is that building owners abide by the MDL and do not circumvent our existing law. Once again, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak? Yes.
Hello, my name is Maya Kurian, and I'm here testifying on behalf of State Senator Brad Hoileman, who also represents the area. He too apologizes that he couldn't make it this morning, but he asked me to testify on his behalf. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony today, strongly opposing the appeal by the owner of 515 East Fifth Street in Manhattan, requesting that the Board of Standards and Appeals vary several requirements of the New York State Multiple Dwelling Law. As the State Senator representing 515 East Fifth Street, I am very familiar with this property and the owner's decision eight years ago to construct two additional stories in violation of the current zoning, and his continued refusal to bring the building up to code. The building's owner illegally erected the sixth and seventh floor additions in 2006 without the proper permits, and without complying with the provisions of the MDL. The owner has argued that compliance with the MDL would present a financial hardship, however, this is a problem of his own making. Since the illegal units were first completed eight years ago, the owner has profited handsomely by renting them to tenants paying market rate. It is estimated by tenants at 515 East Fifth Street that the owner may have gained close to $1 million in revenue in that time. However, the exact figure is unknown, as the owner has never disclosed his revenue, nor been required to do so. A key requirement of gaining a waiver of this particular MDL provision is having to show the potential negative impact bringing a property up to code would have on the owner's finances. I ask that the disclosure of the owner's profits be made a requirement as part of any current and future applications, as these numbers are relevant if the owner is seeking to make a financial hardship argument. I also ask that the board reopen the hearing on the zoning variance application, so that rental income can be taken into account on that application as well. Furthermore, in the time since the owner chose to increase the size of the building and add two floors without necessary approvals, tenants have been occupying the additional units without a certificate of occupancy, and living in a building that is not up to code. It is outrageous that the owner is once again attempting to legitimize his wrongdoing by asking for a waiver of certain MDL standards designed to protect tenants. He is putting my constituents at risk, and if anything, causing them undue hardship. In fact, the Department of Buildings has repeatedly issued violations, including nine for illegal apartments, four for working without a permit, and 10 stop-work orders. It is clear from these violations that criterion of the MDL were not being met before, and that they are still not being met now. Although the BSA has ruled in the past that the seventh-floor penthouse must be removed, the owner has continued to rent the premises illegally and without a certificate of occupancy, as evidenced by the nine certificate of occupancy violations that are open with the Department of Buildings. The owner admitted that the penthouse must be removed... The owner admitted that the penthouse must be removed in a letter to the BSA dated June 24, 2013. He needs to take action to do so, and the cost must not be considered part of his claims of hardship. I believe that the only proper course of action is for this variance to be denied, and I respectfully ask the board to reject this application. I appreciate the board's time and consideration, and I thank you again for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Sarah Romanowski speaking on behalf of the East Village Community Coalition. Nice to see you. I respectfully request that you reject the variance, the MDL request, at 515 East Fifth Street. This application has appeared previously before Community Board Three and the Board of Standards and Appeals, seeking consideration and resources from this body and the community board. Each time, the matter demands the attention of our councilwoman, tenants in the buildings, and local organizations. Through this ongoing process, the applicant has failed to comply with orders to remove illegally constructed penthouse. Instead, he has considered to rent the units without a certificate of occupancy, turning a profit on space that should neither exist nor have tenants. The applicant now claims an unnecessary hardship, which the application fails to demonstrate. To evaluate such a claim, he would need to provide a complete accounting of the building's revenue. The claim of hardship is fabricated solely by the applicant. In reality, the addition is a source of revenue yielding earnings beyond the removal expenses. Violations of the zoning code, specifically on streets contextually zoned in the Lower East Side, zoned lower than the surrounding district, should not be allowed where evidence of hardship is absent. We encourage you to fully enforce the city's multiple dwelling law, and I commend this committee for preserving the character and the cohesive buildings on East Fifth Street, and thank you for considering the EVCC position.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, and congratulations and welcome. Chairwoman Pearl Mutter. My name's Karen Lowe. I'm with the Greenwich Village Society for Historic Preservation, the largest membership organization in Greenwich Village, the East Village, and NoHo. Regarding this case, whose history goes back before this board at least six years, this board's comments at yesterday's review session really said it all. The applicant has neither fully responded to the board's repeated questions nor taken actions required by the board. We, too, respectfully request that this requested variance of the multiple dwelling law be denied. As Commissioner Ottley Brown rather poignantly noted, it's almost a mockery of this board that we request something a few years ago, and it has still not happened. She was referring to the penthouse, which is still there, still being rented out, despite the fact that it was ordered to be removed some years ago. A mockery is also being made of the building's tenants, who deserve a safe and legal dwelling, other applicants who strive to follow the law, and other citizens who expect a fair and sensible public process. The applicant has simply not shown that his compliance with the MDL as written would cause practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship. As has been pointed out many times, any hardship has been caused by the owner's own actions, not the original conditions of the lot or the building. Meanwhile, the applicant has not adequately documented the existed fireproofing, as Chair Pearl Mutter noted yesterday, and the existing sprinkler system does not work, according to a tenant's sworn affidavit. Apartments have been long inhabited without a certificate of occupancy. The owner has neither removed the illegal units nor ever given a full accounting of the income generated from them. We appreciate the board's renewed scrutiny of this case, in which it is quite difficult to see evidence of good faith efforts by the applicant. It's past time for the applicant to do his part, rather than continuing to use the time and resources of all of us here. Thank you for your consideration, and I will submit copies.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Mr. Mitsner?
Please restate your name to the record.
Marvin Mitsner, the applicant.
I am actually curious about your response to the financial hardship analysis. It's kind of a little hard to get one's head around the idea that you rent units and have income from the units, but the units are illegal, so how do you fit that into the hardship argument? It's a little tricky. So I'm just curious what your response is to that.
Simply that the standard under the MDL is a very liberal standard. MDL 310 simply says, "Any hardship or any practical difficulty," and that's a very, very liberal standard. We meet that standard, and we've indicated how we do. There is a practical difficulty in strictly complying with the MDL, particularly under these circumstances where all the fire safety improvements have been installed. And I should point out that tenants have had the benefit of a much safer building over these years. This is an old tenement building. It's non-fireproof, it's wood construction, it had no fire safety improvements. It now is significantly better in terms of its fire safety and its ability to withstand that kind of a difficulty. And I think that that's been a benefit, and it's been installed, and yet the owner is still trying to complete the process after all these years.
But my question had to do with, how do you factor in the income that was made where it was no C of O? How do you fit that into... Because for your... Both for the certificate... I'm sorry. Both for the variance and for the MDL finding, you have to show the financial difficulties associated with applying.
It's irrelevant. That's not a relevant factor. What's relevant in terms of the MDL 310 is the practical difficulty of strictly complying with the MDL. And we've shown exactly what would be involved in having to reconstruct this building to fully comply with the MDL, and that's the standard.
Okay. And in terms of the variance?
Same thing with the variance. We have a good... The variance, by the way, is not part of this discussion, but I know you're making it...
I'm just curious.
It's still not relevant, because we have a good-faith reliance in terms of the variance also. It is a fait accompli. We have done the work. We relied in good faith, and based upon that, we're entitled to that variance. And that was the understanding when we filed the application, and that was the understanding when we went to court on the vested rights aspect of it.
Okay. So then if we... So I think part of the confusion on the submission is, so we have a submission that shows... That's approved by DOB, that shows that you did fire stop in the hallways, for example. It shows, "Add fire code gypsum board to existing plaster wall to achieve two-hour enclosure." It says that on these approved drawings, so presumably if all of that work was signed off, that work would have been done. We need the sprinkler set, as I say, to understand that. And how do you respond to this question about the functionality of the sprinklers? You said the testing report showed that they're functional, but on the other hand, there was this fire where it was not responsive to the fire. Can you get into that? Is there inadequate pressure, in other words, for it to be responsive to the fire?
No. We've had it tested every month. As I mentioned earlier, we will respond specifically to that event. Throughout the entire submissions by the opposition, they've cited to one affidavit by one tenant of one incident where they claimed the sprinkler wasn't working. We'll investigate that and find out what happened. But we have reports taken every month that have been tested, and it's functional.
Okay. And can you submit those reports?
Yes.
And I hope that they're detailed reports, not just a little signature that says...
No, no. They are monthly reports of every aspect of the sprinklers. They're signed off by a reputable company, and we do testing every month.
Okay. So I guess we just need to go back to what happens with the penthouse.
Yes.
So we need your commitment that... Oh, and I had another question. So I see there are four units upstairs, so the four units are currently occupied. Is that correct?
Yes.
So...
I'm not sure.
Okay. Not sure.
I'm not sure. I spoke too quickly. Some are, but not all of them are occupied.
Okay. So it's easier, obviously, if they're not all occupied. I know that they're small units, but on the other hand, the only thing that you really have to do in the unit while it's occupied is close up the ceiling that staircase goes to, just so that you can start working on the roof, right? So I'm not seeing any reason why that little bit of demo couldn't be handled in 60 days. So I would say that you come back in 60 days with a photograph of no penthouse.
I will take that up with the owner, and as I said before, I'll make the commitment to discuss this with Buildings and see what we can accomplish.
Okay. And so more than that, if you would please call... Who's the... Whose case is this?
Tony.
Oh, so call Tony and tell her what the status is of your permit. And if you're having any trouble getting a permit, we will speak to Buildings to make sure you get a permit really fast. The architect, I assume it's the same architect who's involved? Or is he no longer in the story?
Um...
We don't know. Okay. So anyway...
I'd have to check on that also. I don't know if we have to substitute.
Make sure you pay the architect, and then that way, that architect will self-certify the demo plans. That'll work. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So we need to hear from you, and we need you back in 60 days. We need you to call Tony Matias within the next week to tell us where you are in your pursuit of the permit, and if you're having difficulty, we can facilitate that. So what, 60 days? The calendar, can I just... Yes, go ahead.
Just so that you don't think I'm too potty, just take a look at what DOB approved against what we evidently approved or you proposed to us back in 2012. I think we made some tweaking to your stair assembly on exactly how you got your fire rating. I remember having that conversation. So if you could just make sure that either those amendments were carried out or whether or not DOB accepted a different version, but I'm pretty sure we had that discussion.
All right. I'll check on that.
Thank you.
I also have a question for Tony. I guess, did our fire department representative review these?
I don't believe so.
Yes? That would be... So I would also like to have the fire department take a look at the proposal and make sure that they're okay with what the MDL modifications are. Okay? Because DOB did one review, but we have to do our own review.
Right.
Okay. Okay. So 60 days from today. Sixteen. That would take you to November 18. So that would be really good for construction workers. Not cold anymore, they're done.
I haven't made that excuse.
Okay. Okay. So if you could be back here on November 18 with enormously terrific news for everyone? Photographs of the terrific news?
And hopefully I get returned good news.
Okay. So that will be... So I'm sorry. So submission date... Let's make it the submission date, the 18th, to give you the full 60 days to take the picture, and the hearing on the 25th. Does that work? That's the week of Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
If that's not good, then the 9th of December.
I wouldn't want to push it out that far, but let me just... Bear with me for a moment. I'll have to check back, but I think we can do the 25th.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Sorry. Did tenants have an opportunity to respond?
Ah, okay. We need a... Okay. Well, then that would...
We can do it quickly.
So in order for us to be able to... Because the next hearing is kind of far away, so we are making a really... So I guess, could you come up, please?
Yes. My apologies.
Thank you. Just want to say that the effort... The only thing that we want to see on that 60 days is the penthouse is removed. So I'm not really sure what kind of response the tenants need. The penthouse is going to be removed, so you can't tell us that it's not removed, because there's going to be a picture of it removed. So I'm not really sure that a response is needed. On the other hand, you'd be welcome to speak at the hearing.
Okay. That's sufficient.
Because I think otherwise, all the other conditions will remain the same. It's just there won't be a penthouse. Right?
Fair enough. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Who's the speaker? Who's the councilwoman? Say it. Oh, okay. Okay, yeah. Do you want to speak? I understand there's another speaker on this item. Councilwoman, do you want to come up?
My staff were already at my table.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Okay. Okay. So we'll stay on that schedule. Submission on the 18th, hearing on the 25th.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
New cases. Item number 13, calendar number 19128, 3028th Street, Queens. Office of Marvin D. Mitsner.
Marvin Mitsner, the applicant.
What do you know?
Yeah. Didn't have to move too far. So there are some questions raised at the executive session. The first one is about the bank commitment letter, which expires in September 2014. The owner is getting an extension of that, and we'll have that very shortly. The second question by Commissioner Ottley Brown was about the expenditures. There are additional expenditures, about $700,000. We will modify our figures to reflect that.
And you'll give us the newly adjusted total cost as well?
Yes, we will.
Right?
That's correct. And then finally, there was a question about the status of the backflow prevention device. It's been approved by DEP. We're just waiting to get the plan examination at DOB to remove that.
Okay. Great. Any other questions about that? Are there any speakers on this item? Okay. I think we can close this.
Motion to close.
So a motion to close, or...
Chair Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Right. So let's say the 23rd, we can have a... All right. We can vote on this on the... Okay. I'm sorry, there's a submission date. I'm sorry. Left that out. Submission date on the 23rd. Is that enough time, or you need more time?
That's fine.
Okay. We can vote on the 7th.
Very good. Yeah, thank you very much.
23rd. 11th, December?
No. No. So 23rd submission. 11th, December. 10, 7. 10, 7. Submit next week? Okay. See anybody? Good. Sorry.
Item number 14, calendar number 6713A, 945 Zariga Avenue, DeBronz, New York City Board of Standards and Appeals.
Okay. And I have to recuse from this matter? We have a motion to reopen for discussion?
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
As we discussed at yesterday's review session, as part of an Article 78 proceeding on this matter, the court remanded this case back to the BSA for its consideration in revising its September 24, 2013 resolution on this matter to include a distinction between the Zariga Avenue case and a 12th Avenue sign case that the board had approved. We will be adding additional language to distinguish those two cases and the factors between those two cases, and the resolution will include that language. So I make a motion to... I guess we're actually readopting...
Readopting the amended resolution?
We're readopting a resolution that we've already previously passed with the new language. I think the Commissioners have had the opportunity to see that new language. So I make a motion to readopt the September 24, 2013 resolution on this matter.
An emotion to readopt? Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
We lost it. Did you take the break? Yes. But later. Yes? Oh. We'll... Okay.[1731.72]
Commissioner Oliver Brown?
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Montanez? We lost... Yes. But later. Yes. Oh. We lost. Yes. But later. Yes. Oh. We lost. We lost. Yes. But later. Yes. Oh. We lost. 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 We lost.